Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
No, was there? If you're... Okay, 1:31.
Answered my... Faster than...
It's not true, he's right, faster, great. So, windows lock on?
Oh, it did that earlier. So, it's the new one part, so they're all gonna have the same?
Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone, to the June 21st, 2021, regular council meeting, beginning at 1:31. We'll start the meeting with the declaration of the traditional lands. The City of Lloydminster and the Lloydminster City Council would like to acknowledge that the chambers in which we are holding today's meeting is situated on Treaty VI territory, traditional lands of the First Nations and Métis people. Let's now all pause for a moment of silent reflection. As a reminder, all members of council are obligated to declare a conflict of interest or a cuniori interest as per Section 133 of the Lloydminster Charter regarding any item on this agenda. Next, I'll move to additions or deletions to the agenda. Next, to approval of the agenda. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you, Your Deputy Worship. I move that the agenda dated June 21st, 2021 be approved.
Okay, can I get a second? Laura Lee, our councillor-marin, my apologies. Okay. Any other questions before I call for the question? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Carried. Next, I'll move on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Counsel Buckingham.
Thank you. I move that the regular council minutes dated June 7th, 2021 be approved.
Can I get a second? Counsel Whiting. Any other questions before I call for the question? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Carried. Any business arising from the minutes? Not seeing any. Onto new business. Item 6.2, Office of the City Clerk.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor Torson and your council. For 6.2.1, 2021 Alberta election for Senate and referendum question, I will ask the City Clerk Doug Rodwell to present.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. The item before you is the 2021 Alberta election for Senate and referendum question, and the recommendation is that council appoint Doug Rodwell as returning officer and Marilyn Lavoy as a substitute returning officer for the Quebec, or for the October 18th, 2021 Alberta election for Senate vote and referendum question. Additionally, that council authorize the returning officer to determine the days and hours for the advanced poll. The Alberta municipal election will be held on October 21st, held in October 2021, and the City of Lloydminster is required to hold an election for Senate and referendum question. Earlier this year, the Government of Alberta announced the election for the Senate and referendum question would form part of the Alberta municipal election ballot. Although the City of Lloydminster follows the Saskatchewan Act, the city will be required to abide by the Alberta legislation and allow all Alberta eligible Alberta residents the opportunity to vote on the Senate and referendum questions. The Alberta Local Authorities Elections Act requires by resolution that the appointments of both the returning officer and the substitute returning officer be completed no later than June 30th. The election will be held at the Service Sports Centre Fieldhouse on Monday, October 18th, 2021, between 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. for eligible Alberta residents within the city. An advance poll will be held at City Hall prior to the election date. The options are that council appoint Doug Rodwell and Marilyn Lavoy as returning and substitute returning officer, or that council not approve the motion as indicated, recommended above. This item in alignment with the following strategic area, delivering good governance, ensuring the required timelines are met for an upcoming election, is important to ensure legislative compliance. Legislative services consulted with legal who confirm the city has the ability to abide by the Alberta legislation for the purposes of holding an election for the Senate and referendum question without passing an election bylaw. The city will follow the Alberta Local Authorities' Election Act, Senate Election Act, and Referendum Act for the October 2021 Alberta election. Budget and financial implications, there is no expense to the city as the province of Alberta will be covering all costs associated with the upcoming election in accordance with the Senate Elections Grant Regulations and the Referendum Payments Regulation. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Any questions on this item? Comments?
Counsel Dajak. I'll make the motion. Thanks, Worship. Deputy Worship, Deputy Dog, I don't know which one to use here, Your Highness. Move that council enter an extension of the seamless... Whoops. Well, they're all having trouble here today, obviously. Here we go. Start again. Move that council appoint Doug Rodwell as returning officer and Marilyn Lavoy as substitute returning officer for the October 18th, 2021 Alberta election for Senate vote and referendum question. Additionally, that council authorize returning officer to determine the days and hours of advanced poll.
Okay, can I get a second? Counsel Fagin. Just before that, I did have one question myself. Just as far as the advanced poll, are we aware whether or not they're going to give any type of guidance as to number of times, number of locations, anything like that, or is it kind of carte blanche, we decide? And the only reason I ask is because it says that they cover all expenses, but if we had more advanced polls and more advanced poll locations than other communities, you would think it would cost more and they may want to know that you were doing that, so...
So, the acts do not dictate how many we hold, but we would usually hold it Saturday prior to the election. And if we did have to add an extra one in, if we felt that was appropriate, that still would be within the budget implications that are set.
Okay, just a comment, I guess, generally. And this is just something that, and I don't know if individuals can vote at any polling location in Lloydminster or not, or in the province, sorry, but just some feedback we've got in the past is having the advanced poll too close to the actual election date, anyone who works away or works in camp, anything like that, may be disenfranchised from being able to actually cast a vote, so having maybe, rather than the Saturday before, having it the whole week before that on the Saturday, may be able to capture those. It's just a comment I've heard in the past. Thank you.
Sorry, so we had a motion, so all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Carrie. Next, we are on to item 6.2.2, Seamless Education Levy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For 6.2.2, seamless levy extension, I will ask the City Clerk, once again, Doug Rodwell to present.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. The matter is the seamless levy extension, and the recommendation is that council enter into an extension of the seamless levy funding agreement with the Lloydminster Public School Division and the Lloydminster Roman Catholic Separate School Division, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. The City of Lloydminster and Lloydminster Public School Division and Lloydminster Roman Catholic Separate School Division are currently negotiating an updated seamless levy agreement. At the December 14th, 2020 regular council meeting, the city gave notice that it was withdrawing from the seamless levy agreement. The city did commit to work with the school divisions to negotiate a new and updated agreement that was to be in place for January 1, 2022. Both school divisions and the city have been engaged in negotiations to develop the new agreement. However, in order for the school divisions to make certain programming and budgetary commitments, they require some funding assurances for the 2122 school year. All parties agreed that the best way to provide those assurances while encouraging ongoing negotiations was to provide an extension to the previous agreement until August 2022. The extension provides for the collections of seamless levy in the tax year, in the tax year 2022, the reduction of the levy monies collected by 5% to collect $2,287,948, or $42 for the 2022 calendar year, and to disperse the funds to the school divisions, the establishment of an agreement pursuant to Section 304 of the Lloydminster Charter to prescribe the method of remitting educational taxes and levies. And this is, this extension does not commit the city to providing the seamless levy funds past 2022 calendar year unless an agreement to do so is ratified by all parties. Once again, the, there's three options, is the council pass the motion, council does not approve of the extension, or council requests further information. This is in alignment with the following strategic area, delivering good governance, having an up-to-date legislative agreements is conducive with the principles of open and transparent government. Section 302 of the Lloydminster Charter provides that council may enter into an agreement with the school divisions to provide for a levy to be used for citywide educational programming. Any funds that are levied pursuant to this section would be in addition to the education tax mill rate imposed by the provinces for the provision of educational service delivery, and the seamless levy will draw from taxation $2,287,942 in the 2022 calendar year. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Any questions on this item? Comments? Okay, Counsel Maren.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, we've had lots of chance to kind of look at the seamless levy and the impact that it has on education in our community, so I've been really pleased that we've had, you know, so much opportunity to engage, to really understand all perspectives in this matter, and that today we're kind of making that decision, or perhaps making the decision that, that education is a priority in our community, and that we want to make sure that we're helping the, the school divisions to really meet the needs of students in this next calendar year. So, I look forward to those next conversations where we can have really good engagement with the, with the community as well as the school divisions to, to ensure that children get a good education in our community. So, that's all, thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Whiting?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy. Do we have, this, part of this is, the need for this is due to two different budget years, one from the fiscal year of 2022, and then the other one of the budget year of the school board, which would be 21 to 22. Do we have an idea of when, as this process has gone forward, and I'm very happy that the discussion has gone the way it has, and that it's, it's opened up a lot of topics? Is there an idea where we're, what the thought, like, do people have an idea of where we're going to have a final decision, how far down the road? Do we, are we hoping for one by the end of 2021, or are we very much more likely into 2022?
Yeah, from my perspective in our discussions at the administrative level, is discussions, if approved by both school boards and council today, we'd be starting those discussions Wednesday, in terms of the, putting the, I guess, the contents of a new agreement together. There's also, you know, provincial government funding portion that the school divisions need to take care of from their end with support where required from the city, but I think in discussions with the school board, they'd like to have something in place by, you know, the third quarter to the end of this year, 2021, so they can plan accordingly for their budgets, and, and we're not in this position again next year, down to the, the last minute negotiation. So, I think it's in the best interest of all parties to have something in place by at least the end of this year, if not earlier.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Dajak.
Thanks, Worship. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the challenges in operating in Lloydminster is that, you know, the charter creates its own sets of challenges when you have to function with funding from both provinces. The city feels it, healthcare feels it, education feels it, and I think it's been sometimes when we had a look at this formula, what it does, and certainly one of the, I would say, front and center for past council, and this one I'm sure to continue, is the whole notion of transparency, and being able to present and share the details of what the levy's all about, where it goes, and I think as we look at these discussions, that provides the opportunity so ratepayers can be on side with this and see the good work that it does, and everybody has an opportunity to sort of have a look inside and see that it's something that's valuable and contributes a lot to the city. So, I think these discussions are timely, I think they're relevant, particularly in the economic times as well, so there are a lot of pieces that I think are, are important and will be addressed in this process, so I'm very supportive of this.
There's no other comments? I'd like to offer my two cents. Just looking at the, kind of the, the challenges we've run into as far as timing and everything, it's almost a demonstration of some of the issues that we have with the agreement in general. And that's not to say that administration hasn't done a fantastic job of bringing, you know, comments and concerns to the safe table, and the school divisions responding in kind, you know, and within good time, it's just, just the issue of, you know, having to push this out an entire full year really demonstrates that maybe we have to think about what the right dates are for the agreements and making sure we have the right triggering events for, for ensuring that renegotiation can happen and everything like that. So, it's, it's great that we are, you know, we are, we're talking about the seamless education levy in general, but just, there definitely came with some challenges even just with the way it was designed to begin with. So, definitely supportive of giving that extension because it's just not practical for the school divisions to have made adjustments at this time based on when the, kind of the timeline was that the agreement had to be renegotiated by. One question I did have, though, is more on the function of the dollar amount. So, in theory, if we're saying it's a fixed amount that we're going to adjust by, the seamless education levy could theoretically actually go up as well, like the actual mill rate could actually go up if, if assessment goes down, is that correct? Because it's a fixed amount?
Thank you for the question. So, this is based on, similar to a requisition, so it'd be a requisition amount, if the assessment goes up, the mill rate for a seamless levy may go down. If the assessment goes down, the mill rate for seamless levy would adjust accordingly.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the fact that we're saying from the dollars that it was in the current year is being adjusted by this amount, and we're saying it's a flat amount. It's not adjustment to the mill rate portion of the levy. Other than that, yeah, I just really think that this, this in general demonstrated even more, just the need to make sure that we've got, you know, really good contract and a really good agreement between all of us that says, what are we doing, when are we doing it, what are all those, you know, really important kind of dates and triggering points that are important on both sides, make sure that's all built into it, so. If there's no other comments, so...
Yeah, just one last comment from my chair, as the, the public division did approve this at their board meeting last week, and the Catholic division will be discussing it tonight at their board meeting, so from a, the timing is good from all three standpoints if we, if all three parties agree.
Thank you. And Counsel Buckingham?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear in my mind. I had no problem with the dollar amount and the number there because, and I could be wrong, so I'll just look for clarification, that that was based on the assessments that just went out for people's tax notices now, so we knew what that number was going to be because we already know what the assessment is for this year, and by the time we renegotiate this contract, it will fall in line with next year's assessment notice, so there probably is very little chance of that moving, as far as the mill rate goes up or down.
So, this dollar amount that we're talking about is for the 22 year? So, it'll be based on the assessments we create in this year for 22? So, no, we have not established the mill rate for seamless levy for 22 at this point. It's not done yet.
Yeah, that's exactly what I thought. I'm perfectly clear, thank you.
Okay, if there's... Counsel Whiting?
Yeah, sorry, just one more question, and it kind of goes back to the original question I was asking about when we have this agreement in place. So, if we have the finalized agreement in place by the end of this year, we implement that when? Because of the two different budget years. So, we're levying this $2 million amount for the 2022 year, but then halfway through that year, the budget for the school division should have the new seamless levy requisition amount, whatever you want to call it, the new agreement in place for that 2223 year, but we've already put the mill, put the tax levy in place to our residents for that full 22 year, correct? What happens, I guess, to that first half of the 2223 year for the, for the school division's budget with, because it's just because of the crossover of budget years, I guess?
So, municipalities have the opportunity to issue a levy or establish the levy once a year. So, when we establish that this is the amount for the seamless levy, it will be for the calendar year, January to December. Should they didn't, should we negotiated an amount that would, would change how much they would get from their September, that would fall part of the agreement and be an adjustment in the following year? We cannot levy more than once a year.
Right, right, exactly. So, all that would mean is that the, the new agreement for the first year would have an amount, whatever the agreement looks like, that amount that would take into consideration the amount that was already levied for that 2022 year, so does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm, I'm hearing is, what school year does the new agreement actually hit? Is that your question? Because to me, that's, that is, what school year does it finally, is the new agreement functioning?
There's always going to be, whether it's a budget year for the city or a budget year for the school year, there's going to be a half-year crossover somehow, and I don't know where you, how you consider that and how you take that into consideration, whether you're, you know, I, I think you know what I'm, I'm asking, I just don't know. And it's something that can be worked out, obviously, and I'm happy with this extension, but it's something we're going to probably have to deal with at some point when the final pen goes to paper.
Thank you.
Counsel Dajak?
Yeah, I, Worship, I was going to say that really the taxation's for the full year, and the divisions are operating already on, on sort of a disjointed timeline as it is because, you know, the province, provinces typically come out March 30th, and then the school divisions are actually funded on the enrollments they have on September 30th. So, there are a number of pieces that they work with in terms of sort of being out of step with the funding formulas and all the other pieces, and this is just one more that they, they recognize that when they do their budgets, they'll say, you know, what percentage is in this school year, what percentage is in the next school year, and budget accordingly. So, it's, it's not a new concept.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions, anyone like to make, make a motion? Counsel Whiting?
Sure. I, I move that council enter into an extension of the seamless levy funding agreement with the Lloydminster Public School Division, LPSD, and the Lloydminster Roman Catholic Separate School Division, LRCSSD, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents.
Can I get a second? Counsel Dajak? Okay, all in favor, or any additional? Ah, there we go, all in favor. Nailed it. All right, all opposed? All right, carried. Next up, we move on to item 6.4, Community Development Services, Lloydminster Library Board Appointment, 6.4.1.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For 6.4.1, library board appointment, I will ask Executive Manager, Community Development Services, Tracy Simpson, to present.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. So, today we're here to appoint Maria Sarcall Gatton-Four for a three-year term to the Lloydminster Public Library Board. As per bylaw number 22-2020, all members of the board must be appointed by council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Counsel Maren?
Thank you, Worship. So, the Lloydminster Public Library Board's been very intentional about recruiting new people to serve on the board that will fill some gaps we have in terms of expertise and that will fill some gaps we have in terms of expertise. And so we've had Maria attend a meeting. We know her experience in the community at Lloydminster Sexual Assault Center, as well as Lakeland College, and that she'll bring a real professional addition to the library board. So I would be happy to make that motion.
Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, Worship. Just a question. Does this fill out the library board's board, or are there still vacancies? Or did we, are we replacing someone who has recently retired from the board?
Yep, I can answer that for you, Counselor Buckingham. I believe there are two vacancies on the library board. This will fill one of those spots, and there'll still be one vacancy from two people who stepped down this year.
Any other questions?
Just provide a comment. You know, it's just, you know, from my time on, sitting on that board, it's, it's great to see new young faces and showing up to put their hand up and put something forward. I don't know this individual personally, but I do recall seeing a like public presentation on Pechicucha night or something like that, and she had a fantastic presentation. She's, seems like a very, very, you know, bright young woman. So, oh, it's, it's great that people are putting their names forward and going towards making the public library board an even better place. So if there's no other comments, so.
Counselor Maron, second?
Do you want me to read it?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
I'll make the motion that council approve the appointment of Maria Sarkay Gagantfor for a three-year term ending June 1st, 2024.
Next, we have item 6.4.2, Lloydminster Public School Division Capital Funding Request.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. For 6.4.2, LPSD Capital Funding Request, I will once again ask Tracy Simpson from Community Development Services to present.
Thank you. So today we're here to request that council approve a funding of $250,000 to be funded from the Recreation and Culture Capital Reserve to the Lloydminster Public School Division to invest in the expansion of the Lloydminster Composite High School. In April of this year, city administration was approached by the school division to discuss their, their plans to expand the composite high, high school, which will include additional education spaces to accommodate growth within the school and a recreation and gymnasium space. The purpose of the request from the city is to supplement funding from the province to expand their recreational space to include a full field size, field house sized space similar to that of the service sports center. This will be able to accommodate both court and field sports. The space will be designed to allow for after-hours community use through a separate community entrance and provide additional community use throughout the year to users of the service sports center currently. Additionally, this expansion will include a small fitness center that they plan to run with the teachers as well as the students as an entrepreneurial teaching opportunity. The school division plans to break ground in 2021 and sets to see the facility open to the community and the school for the September 2023 school year. They plan to have the facility open to community use weekdays and evenings and weekends, working around the priority of school sport needs. The addition of a third field house into the community allows for continued long-term growth of all levels of recreation, including drop-in, adult and youth leagues and high-performance teams. The options today in front of council is to approve the motions as indicated above. The council do not approve the funding to the school, or that council ask for more information. Administration is also recommending that joint use agreement is established between the city and the public school division to ensure after-hour community use is committed. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Executive Manager. The one thing I didn't see in here that I just wanted to be clear on, and it may fall into when we get that joint use agreement ready to go. If someone comes to the service sports center and wants to go on the field house, they pay to go on that field house. Are we going to be charging? Are people going to be getting charged to go in and use this? And if so, who's benefiting from the, the charging of those people?
Yeah, so currently the city has other joint use agreements with both school divisions in the community. And how those work is the school divisions or the schools themselves can set their own rates, and those fees go directly to the school to offset operating costs for those after-hours. So the city wouldn't set those rates, nor would we collect those funds.
Okay, so this is, this is a straight one-time capital funding request that we won't see, even when the cities, the city folks are using it full-time or half-time, whenever they're using it, we're never going to see a dime back in whatever the fees are charged to those people for using it?
No, the intention would be that the fees go to the school to help offset the operating.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dietrich?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, that's no different than the current agreements where the city would collect a registration fee for whatever the club, clubs are in their operation and so on and so forth. And then, you know, each of the schools where the events are being held are responsible for the maintenance costs, security costs, and all the additional cost and maintenance and so on and so forth, operational costs, as Executive Director has, has stated. I, I think, I see this from two perspectives. One is I think the public school division has been a pretty good partner with the city historically in terms of sharing its facilities. Secondarily, I guess I also see this as a forward-looking venture where as the city grows, there'll be pressure put upon all the facilities across the city. And in the past, and certainly in my experience in the past, there have been times when there literally have not been gymnasiums available, places to play basketball, volleyball, and scheduling has gone late into the night. And at some points, I know that the public school division, going backwards in my time, have said, no, we're not going to have a caretaker on, on staff working this late in the evening. So it's from a security perspective, safety perspective. We just don't want people in, in the buildings till midnight. So this will be, I think, a welcome addition for today as well as going forward.
Counselor Buckingham?
Yeah, thank you, Worship. Yeah, and I just wanted to have the discussion clear so that when we're doing a capital funding request like this, so that nobody was expecting or thinking that some of the, the charges were going to come back to the city from when people were there. When you look at it on the surface, it is a, a good investment from the city's side of things because to further to Counselor Dietrich's comments, how do you insure? How do you secure? How do you staff? How do you maintain all this stuff? It's a pretty good investment from the city's side of things. I don't think we could do it any, any more economically sound than this way. And it gives people of our community and other opportunity to, to be active and enjoy our community. So I think it's a good investment.
Counselor Maron?
Thank you, Worship. And Counselor Buckingham just said exactly what I was going to say, is that this is a good investment into the community to, to, you know, create new opportunities for people to be active, to be engaged in community, to participate in some recreation. So I have always appreciated the LPSD joint use agreement that they've had with the city. And, and, you know, my children certainly benefited from playing many sports in their facilities, and, and that's good for community as well. The other question that I had was just around the timelines of that joint use agreement. So you'll, once we give the funding, then we start the, developing that joint use agreement, or how does that work?
Yeah, so Counselor Maron, we would probably enter into those discussions with them if council approves the funding today. We have a little time before the facility opens in 2023. We'd probably take the existing ones as a place to start and build from there and have it established before the facility opened.
And so the existing agreements we have, are they ready to be updated and renewed, or are they? Yes, they are.
Yeah, we're actually, prior to this request coming in, we were starting those discussions with the school division. So it's, it's good timing that they can all be done at the same time.
Great, thank you very much.
So I just had a question first. It's just as far as our recreation kind of master plans, do we know approximate timing of when, you know, with growth, we would be in a position where we would need another facility like this? Even ballpark?
That's a really good question, Deputy Mayor. I'm not sure off the top of my head I'd know a population size or a date. We're, we're definitely not at capacity, struggling to keep up at the service sports center. I think what this facility does is it gives us opportunities to prioritize usage of that facility for more drop-in and, and league play. The, I would.
Even if, even if it's a professional opinion ballpark of how many years?
I would say that if the community hit, you know, around that 50,000, we'd probably start to see a pinch in the two facilities, and this would give us some, some more flexibility long-term, but that's just a guess.
Okay. Now, just to, to continue that line of thought, because, you know, to me, that's important. You know, hearing some of the questions today, one of the things I think about, which is kind of out there, is the movie Moneyball. Because in Moneyball, they say, we've got to change the goal. It's not about buying a championship, it's about buying runs. Because runs wins you championship. Well, as part of quality of life, quality of life means affordable recreation. We're buying affordable recreation potentially for 250,000, which would be a 10 or 15 million dollar building in 20 years. But we're paying 250,000 to get people access to that sooner than later. So at the end of the day, these are some of the easiest decisions that come across councils, uh, across our desk and into these chambers is because, yeah, you'd be crazy not to. There's no, there's no municipality on the planet unless they don't have anyone living there that charges full price for recreation. Everyone loses money on it or it's supported by taxes. So having an ability to get it, access to it for user groups and for people to have affordable recreation and not have to have the full cost, to me is, it's, it's a real win-win. So, no, thank you for everything. Counselor Maron?
Thank you, Worship. Sorry, I just had two more comments. And, and so one was that even the location of it, we don't have the ability to build a facility there. And so having a more centralized location provides better access for people living in, in that area of our city. The other thing I loved that was mentioned in here was around how the students and staff would be using this as a, an education opportunity. So students would learn how to manage and run a business like a gym. And so I think that's a really important piece for us, too. And just kind of cool that they, they are making that investment in those youth.
Yeah, I was just going to add one last thing, and I think that one of the things we're seeing, and obviously this past year might, might not be the best year to reflect on because of COVID, but I know in years, years past, what we've seen is that more and more of the hockey teams and sports that are out in the community are looking to places to do dryland training. So because the cost of doing dryland is less than the cost of running the ice, and I think they're trying to find a much more balanced approach to doing the fitness and trying to develop rounder athletes relative to that training. So I would anticipate as the city grows, that demand for that dryland training in particular is going to be one areas that we're going to see increase significantly. And given the focus on hockey at service, I would anticipate pickleball courts are going to be in competition with dryland training if they're going late in the afternoon. So that's an area certainly I see it growth in.
Yeah, there's also an ability to host more events as well, from an economic development perspective. If you've got more facilities, you can, you know, have capacity to host, host larger events. So that was one of you look at Service Sports Center for a volleyball tournament through the winter months, and it's packed. And so having an alternative facility where you can host, you know, twice the size of one, that provides economic impact to the city as well.
Yeah, I was going to add, we're seeing Lakeland Wrestlers Hockey Team now become part of our, our, our sort of teams within the community as well. And, and going forward, as we add a new arena and all those other implications that come with that, certainly the demand for our rec spaces is going to go up.
Counselor Whiting?
It just got me thinking, I guess, out of curiosity, more than anything, does, was there anything planned in our field houses for the 2020 Summer Games? And, or is it all mostly outdoor stuff? Because it's summer. I, I'm just curious. And because this would be then theoretically open for 2024 if we win, if we win the bid for the 2024 Summer Games and just, I just don't remember if there's anything that was planned for indoor, the, the Service Sports Center field houses. I'm just curious. Yeah, not a big deal. I was just wondering, it might help that scenario when that time comes, so.
I definitely, I don't remember either, but I believe it will help. One of the things that we're going to see change with the 2024 games is how food is delivered. So if we, if we get that bid and we move forward, that Service Sports Center might become a better location for something like that. And then the gymnasium would offer a new playing area. So it would definitely have an impact on that event in a positive way.
Yeah, and now that you say that, I wasn't, isn't the, the high school part of where the accommodations would end up, too, I think? So all in all, this would assist in that whole games, I suppose. Good to know. Thanks.
If there's no other comments, I'd allow someone to read the first of the two motions. Counselor Whiting?
I move that council approve the request to transfer 250,000 from the Recreation and Culture Capital Reserve Account, number 1-700-740-35170, to the Lloydminster Public School Division to be invested in the expansion of the Lloydminster Comprehensive High School Project. And that council direct.
Actually, we'll do that in two separate motions.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, can I get a second? Counselor Dietrich? Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor? All opposed? Carried. And the next motion?
And I move that council direct administration to enter into a joint use agreement with Lloydminster Public School Division to identify and assure after-hours community use.
Can I get a second? Counselor Dietrich, sorry. Uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Carried. Next, we are going to go on to policy number 770-01, Public Art Policy. That's item 6.4.3.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. For 6.4.3, the Public Art Policy, I will ask Tracy Simpson once again to present.
Thank you. So today we're presenting policy number 770-01, the Public Art Policy, to council for adoption. The Public Art Policy was reviewed by council at the GPC meeting of June 14th, 2021. Recommendations from the committee have been incorporated into the draft today. The Public Art Policy establishes guidelines for the donation and purchase of public art through the Public Arts Reserve. A minimum of 1% of the annual capital surplus shall be allocated to the Public Art Reserve for the purchase, installation, maintenance, and removal of public art. Cash donations can be accepted under the policy to contribute to the reserve, and an official donation receipt will be provided within the guidelines of the Canon Revenue Agency. The city will take ownership of all the public art required, and the art will become part of the City of Lloydminster's museum collection. Public Art Advisory Committee will be formed, and the committee will evaluate the public art submissions based on specific eligible criteria. The committee will follow a terms of reference that will provide direction and an operating mandate within the city-regulated guidelines. The terms of reference shall stipulate the eligibility requirements for committee members, the roles and responsibilities of the city and the committee, and the reporting requirements of the committee. The committee shall be responsible for developing a detailed application and review process for public art. And additionally, the committee shall support the city in developing a maintenance programming, maintenance program, including an annual operating budget. So just to highlight a couple changes in the policy, since the last time you saw it, they are highlighted in yellow. So we, we clarified in 5.1 that it's the city's procurement policy we'll follow. We changed the Public Art Reserve commitment from 1% to a minimum of 1% as per council's request. We clarified that cash donations shall be accepted and contributed within the guidelines provided for official donation receipts. And then in section 10.3, we added 10.3.9, that any, any item that's identified as an artifact as per the museum collection policy would not be required or fall within the guidelines of the Public Art Policy. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, Worship. I'm glad to see that we're moving ahead with some form of actual policy on this and that there's been some interest in the community, both with some people with specific interest in art and those people that would just like to see some art in the community. I am a little uncomfortable with one section of this, and I just wanted to bring it up here and see if there was the opportunity to, and talk about the wording of 6.1 under the Public Arts Reserve, that the city shall allocate a minimum of 1% of the annual capital surplus to the Public Arts Reserve. Using the word minimum to me is very wide open in a policy. I, I would put forward that I would like to have that word changed from minimum to maximum, unless we edit that policy or something other than the word minimum. And I'd be open to suggestion there, but I'm not certain. I like the word minimum.
Yeah, I'll just speak to that based on the fact that during GPC, I believe I was the one who suggested it be minimum. The reason for that is because it previously said 1% would be allocated. But in reality, when we get an annual surplus, we look at what our needs are in different areas. And even to get some kind of balance started in there, if we say it's 1% flat, it's always just going to be 1%. And last year's was, let's say, a million dollars. You wouldn't have enough to really even get yourself started. So even the way it is now, it gives us enough that we could create some type of reserve balance that we could actually get started. Because if it's 1%, that could mean next year was only $2,000, which is not enough to get started on anything. Whereas minimum of 1% gives us the ability, or it, it'll give us that for sure 1% to get it started. And potentially, we will adjust it otherwise based on the recommendation. it started, and potentially, we will adjust it otherwise based on the recommendations of administration when we go to allocate that capital surplus.
Yeah, so with, within that policy, then, if it says minimum 1%, has to come back to council for anything more than that, correct?
Yeah, so all surplus allocations are approved by council, and so you would, you would have the final say on how much of the allocation goes into the reserve every year.
Good, yep, perfect, thanks.
Any other comments? Counselor Marin?
Thank you, Your Worship, and just a comment. So, last week, we were talking about this at the GPC meeting, and I'm very happy with this policy. I think you've done a, a great job capturing what is good for the city as well as our arts community, what they were hoping for. And so I had an opportunity to, to hear from a couple of artists in the community, and they had listened in to GPC last week, so I thought that was exciting, that they were paying attention. And they're very happy with this. They're happy about doing a Terms of Reference, a committee. They're very excited about the allocation of the minimum 1%. And, and they're really excited that council was so supportive of creating an opportunity to build their culture in, in Lloydminster. And, and so we know that, you know, public art contributes to that community identity. It helps to foster a sense of community pride and that sense of belonging. So I'm, I, I think this, this policy will really help us to do that. And the other thing that they really appreciated was they thought that this was a sustainable policy. And so long-term, this will, will work for, for the city and for our community and for the artists that want to contribute. So, thanks very much.
Counselor Diachak?
Yes, thanks, Your Worship. I would just add as well, I think, you know, the, you know, at the very tail end of the policy, it recommends as well that, or notes, pardon me, that council has a right to review all of its policies. I think it reached a point where, you know, that number or some other pieces are causing discomfort around the table or in the community, council has an opportunity to review the count, policy, and reset it.
No other comments? I would entertain a motion. Oh, Counselor Marin?
Thank you, Your Worship. Now I just need to flip my page back. Sorry about that. My pages are going in the opposite direction. Well, maybe somebody else wants to make it because I've lost my... Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. So, right here. And it's nice and short, I could have had it memorized. I'll make the motion that council approve Policy Number 770-01, Public Art Policy.
I got Counselor Fagden for a second. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Moving on, nothing in operations or from the Chief of Staff, so moving on to bylaws, we've got at 7.1, Bylaw Number 20-2021, text amendment to the Land Use Bylaw Number 5-2016, Warehouse Sales in the I-2 District.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for 7.1, Bylaw Number 20-21. I will ask Caitlin Luster from our Planning Department to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council. The recommendation is that council grant first reading to Bylaw Number 20-2021, text amendment to the Land Use Bylaw Number 5-2016, Warehouse Sales in the I-2 District, and that council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on July 19th, 2021 at 2:00 PM. The City of Lloydminster received a text amendment application requesting that warehouse sales be included as a permitted use in the I-2 District. The applicant is in the process of purchasing an existing building located in this district. The purpose of the I-2 District, as described in the Land Use Bylaw, is to provide for industrial uses that carry out a portion of their operations outdoors or require outdoor storage areas, and any nuisance associated with these uses should not extend beyond the boundaries of the site. The I-2 District presently includes permitted uses such as agricultural-oriented sales and services, vehicle and equipment sales and rentals, cannabis sales, and warehousing. Warehouse sales means development used for warehouse, oh, sorry, for wholesale or retail sale of a limited range of bulky goods from within an enclosed building, where the size and nature of the principal goods being sold typically requires a large floor area for direct display to the purchaser or consumer. Warehouse sales is currently a permitted use in the Light Industrial I-1 District and Service Commercial C-5 District, and is discretionary use in the Commercial Shopping Center C-4 District. Administration completed a review of the, of seven comparable municipalities in Alberta and Saskatchewan. Five of those municipalities included warehouse sales or wholesale in their equivalent of the I-2 District. As part of the bylaw amendment process, referrals were sent to internal departments and external agencies with 21 days to provide comment. The due, I'm sorry, the due date for referral comments was set for July 1st, 2021. The responses received thus far show no concern. I can take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there any questions from council? Not seeing any, yeah, this item was pretty well a slam dunk when it came through GPC last week, so not surprised. Counselor Buckingham?
I would make the motion if that's okay with you. I move that council grant first reading, the Bylaw Number 20-2021, the text amendment to the Land Use Bylaw Number 5-2016, Warehouse Sales in the I-2 District, and that council establish a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on July 19th, 2021 at 2:00 PM.
Can I get a second? Counselor Whiting? Okay, no comments or questions? All in favor? All opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, we've got Item 7.2, Permanent Road Closure Application.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for 7.2, Bylaw Number Dash, 21-2021, Permanent Road Closure Application, 57th Street. I will ask Anthony Andre from our Planning Department to come up and present.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and members of council.
Good afternoon.
The report pertains to an application to permanently close a portion of 57th Street, submitted by Land Division. The recommendation is that council grant first reading to Bylaw Number 21-2021 to close a portion of 57th Street, as shown on Schedule A, and that council establish a public hearing to be held July 19th, 2021 at 2:00 PM. The purpose of the permanent closure is to facilitate the sale and subdivision of approximately 20.67 hectares of land to the Lloydminster Agricultural Exhibition Association, as approved by council during the September 24th, 2018 regular council meeting. Land Division is currently in the process of facilitating the subdivision, which includes a portion of the legal road right-of-way. Should the closure be approved, approximately 1 hectare of the right-of-way will be sold, while the remaining most eastern 0.69 hectares will remain. No portion of the physical roadway subject to the application has been constructed, while most of the right-of-way is currently being utilized by the Exhibition Association. A portion of the right-of-way will be retained by the city and is occupied by the Lloydminster Cemetery. The application is consistent with the development concept of the Northeast Area Structure Plan as well as the Lloydminster Cemetery Master Plan. A 21-day referral period has commenced, which seeks comments and concerns from internal departments, external agencies, and adjacent property owners. A public notice was included in the June 10th and June 17th, 21, 2021 additions to the Meridian Source. Should first reading be given, notice of the public hearing will be given as per Part 7 of the Lloydminster Charter. Should the bylaw receive second and third readings at a subsequent council meeting, requests for consent will be sent to the, will be submitted to the Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure of Saskatchewan. Easements will also be required to protect existing franchise utilities as well as pipelines existing within the road right-of-way. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Do you have any questions? Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, yeah, the chances of there ever being a road constructed here are pretty much zero going forward. I wondered if you had any idea after, should this go through public hearing and, and receive second and third reading, how long it would take? And is there any time constraint on the backside of this to, to move the sale of this land forward? What's, what's our timeline on completing this transaction?
I believe this is the last step. I think that's my understanding, this is the last subdivision was the last condition, and I think this is a condition of subdivision to move that through. So I think this is the final step to, to closing that sale.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a long time coming through all of this stuff, so it'll be nice to, nice to have this all completed, so both the city and the exhibition can, can move forward. So, good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seems relatively straightforward. The only question I have is just, I, well, maybe comment, I don't know if it's a comment or question, but I just don't know how we still had a road there. Like, I would think that would have came up in like an area structure plan or something that said, "Oh, yeah, by the way, you have a road allowance right in the middle of everything we're drawing." So it was just surprising to me, I guess, that it's still there in the background. But would it have been included in any of those documents and just kind of?
It may have been just outside of the North Area Structure Plan area.
Okay. Fair enough. Either way, I, I would entertain a motion, because to me, this one is pretty straightforward and everyone's on board. Counselor Fagden?
Thank you, Your Worship. I move that council grant first reading to Bylaw Number 21-2021, being a bylaw to close down that portion of 75th Street, Plan Number BA3882, in the southwest quarter, 11-50-28, west of the Third Meridian, and the northwest quarter, 02-50-28, west of the Third Meridian, as shown on the sketch attached in Schedule A. In addition, that council establish a public hearing to be held at the regular council meeting on July 19th, 2021 at 2:00 PM.
Can I get a second? Oh, Counselor Buckingham? Any additional comments or concerns? Anything?
Just want to clarify, Counselor Fagden said 75th Street and it's 57th Street.
Nope.
Just want to make sure that that's...
Yep, thanks. Gotcha. City members?
And, and just for, sorry, for clarification, this is just the closure, any, the sale and the reallocation of that east section into the city's land, I believe, goes into like the cemetery, the, becomes ownership, continues to be ownership of the city just as part of those other blocks that are there? Correct?
Correct. The city will take ownership of the remaining portion.
Yeah. And it's, and it's basically to the end of the driving range slash exhibition track area, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that triangular-shaped piece.
Okay. Yeah.
Good question. Is there any other comments or questions before I call for the question? Not seeing any? All in favor? All opposed? Carried. We've, we've gotten through it here, gang. Next up is mayor/councilor reports. You can see I've been very busy from this, this report you have. Mind you, I didn't attend all of these things that are on the list, but someone did, and, you know, I'm certainly thankful that they're able to do all that while all other of us have full-time jobs and stuff like that. Was there anyone else who had anything they'd like to report on? Any maybe big special events they were working on over the weekend? I don't know. Oh, Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, Your Deputy Worship, and no, I'm not going to comment on things that have happened in the past, even as recent as the wonderful event that somebody and people attended this weekend. What I wanted to do was take the opportunity to congratulate all the 2021 grads that are happening this week in, in both of our high schools. It's a long achievement, and it's certainly been a challenging one, more so than usual for this particular school year. And a big thanks to all of our teachers in every level of our school divisions for navigating this interesting year that, that threw a lot of curves at them. So, it's not unnoticed, and a big thank you to them, and all the best to all of our region's 2021 graduates this week.
Thank you for the comment. Is there anyone else who had anything to report? Okay, Counselor Marin?
Thank you, Your Worship. And so I just wanted to make a note that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and tonight at 7:00 PM, there will be vigil for the lives lost to, to the residential schools, or in the residential schools. So anyone would be invited to attend, and I believe Deputy Mayor Torsen, you'll be bringing greetings on behalf of the city.
Thank you for that. I was going to mention it, but I opened to tighten things up before this evening here versus the way this council meeting has gone in general. I think Counselor Fagden also had his hand up.
I, I just, I just wanted to finish, I just wanted to finish one comment, and I, I think that it was really appropriate today that we had a land acknowledgement at the start of our meeting, and I think that I just would invite everyone to really recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and participate in some learning and some activity so that they can raise their awareness and, and start that reconciliation process.
Thank you. Counselor Fagden?
Well, I'll just, I wasn't going to say anything, I'll just, as far as the Red Pest, it was just great to see the act of volunteerism throughout our city and just, you know, a great support from the, from the community members of Lloydminster. There was, you know, 3,000 vehicles that went through over the three-day period again, so really good support, and it just shows what a great community we have.
Thank you, Counselor Diachak.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I was over at the Native Friendship Center, where they celebrated National Indigenous Day as well, and helped with the lunch that they put out there, and, and it was probably 100-plus people that attended, and I, again, I just want to give kudos and, and a pat on the back to the Native Friendship Center and Bonnie Smart, who, Start, Smart? Smart? That, I, one of those, sorry, Bonnie, that, that really puts in a lot of effort to keep the place going, and about 90% plus of the funds that are there, running that organization, come from grants that she writes. And the, the efforts that go in to sustain what they do, their partnership with the Saskatchewan Indian Institute of Education and Training, the programs they're running. One of the young fellows that was sitting on the board, Levi, was also taking the ATAP program up at Lakeland College. I got to know him when I sat on the board there. He was teaching Cree language to over 400 people from across North America, and it was an online program. So it was, the work that's being done in our community is sort of, it's almost this best-kept secret, but it's, it's exciting, phenomenal, and the amount of work and effort that goes in there really forms, I think, a backbone, if you like, of, of, of a lot of the good work that's done around truth and reconciliation and supporting First Nations and maintaining the community.
Thank you, Counselor Diachak, and thank you for attending on behalf of the deputy de- mayor. Any other comments or anything like that? Okay, no more reports?
I just want to just point out that next time we meet here for the Governance and Priorities Committee, meaning we, we should theoretically be full, open, no masks, and back to Plan, Plan B, C, three, Plan Three of the Saskatchewan reopening plan. So that's exciting times, and I know residents are all excited for that, and Alberta has started their plan, which commences January, July 1st, and I know we're 11 days kind of after that on Saskatchewan side, and I'm just maybe hoping that our residents will bear with the Saskatchewan restrictions for 11 days while we are a little bit different in Alberta at that time period, but...
Good comment. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I will move on to any other matters to deal with at this time? Not seeing any? Inquiries from the media?
Did you, Deputy Worship, and they would have any requests for yourself, with Deputy Mayor Torsen?
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for recess?
For recess.
Okay, Counselor Diachak, second. Counselor Fagden? All in favor? Opposed? Carried.